Good evening. We have seven o'clock.
Yeah, seven o'clock.
Six thirty. We have a call. A planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is Tom Quinlan.
Want a lot released?
How many will be left on that? This is on Hillside or Megan's Way?
Megan's Way.
This is the last lot of the?
The last one.
This is the last one? Does it have the top coat on a road?
Yes.
Where does the water go from Lot seven? For most of the subdivision?
Lot seven's got the retention file right there.
Or stays, well, it stays right there?
Well, that Berkshire design, did they send you the?
Yeah, I got the lot, yeah.
Yeah. It's been designed for the?
So the water stays on the property, doesn't go down anywhere else? Okay. What number is this?
Number seven. Number seven.
Is this under the old subdivision regulations or the new?
The old.
The old.
Okay.
Everything going to be in order for the Springtown meeting?
I hope so.
So there are a couple of things that you don't have. No one did the legal description of the road. So the town is, to accept a piece of property, we have to have a deed description of the property.
And who got that?
Looks like I'll be taking some more of your money.
Randy has a program.
Does he? Why didn't he do that? He didn't know I needed that?
No, sir.
A lot of things I didn't know I needed.
The other thing we're going to need are written easements for all of the drainage easements. Just having them on the plan doesn't make them so. So they'll have to be you as the owner or you, I don't know how you broke it up, as who owns what lots.
But now they're individually sold now.
Right, but they were sold subject to the easements.
Right.
So question is, who, you retained the easements. Now you have to give them to us.
Okay.
So that could be properly as part of the same document as the road. But it just hasn't been done.
Right, well, I was not aware of what I had to do. I really got nowhere in account.
It's been a while since we've accepted away. There are some of the steps laid out in the subdivision regulations, but probably no one.
Well, I wanted a copy of that, and where do I get a copy of that?
Of this?
Yeah.
What do you mean with this?
Of that document. Do you have it or do you get it at the town clerk?
Oh, a blank document?
Yeah.
Oh, we should have someone at the planning board office.
Okay, well, Tom clerk doesn't have any.
Oh, okay. Yeah, we should have someone at the town, in the mail, in the town.
So what, for the new members on the board and probably for the audience as well, we failed to come to an agreement and there was an effective compromise by your engineer, who did, I think, an admirable job. We couldn't calculate all the drainage for every lot because we were unsure of how big the houses are going to be, where the driveways were going to be, how many trees are going to be cut down. So they have come back to us with a document and it underwent peer review by Berkshire Design, saying that if a house is put there, the drainage can adequately support the house as well as the road, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Because it's built on a hill that it's built on, that's, it puts it into a kind of a unique category. That's why it was done supposed to most land, most lots, subdivision being kind of more or less on a flat land.
And we've had no complaints from anyone with the houses that have been done so far?
Is this something that they, drainage when they released each lot or just when they're on a slope and?
This is the only subdivision we've had to do this with because it was on such a steep slope. We want to make sure that the water doesn't run onto somebody else. Okay, cause some problem. And like he says, they've been doing it and there's been no issues with actually retaining the water on property and everything, et cetera.
And this is the last subdivision we have under those old subdivision regulations, meaning that we can release this lot before it is accepted by the town meeting. From now on, the last lot will not be released until the town meeting accepts the road.
It's not that Mr. Quinlan has not been trying to get it accepted. He's already been trying for two town meetings and information hasn't quite been there for whatever reason. That's another story, but he wants the town to take ownership. It's not like he doesn't want the town to take ownership. But he's going to get straightened up. Anyway, don't retain a motion to release Lot seven? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So I will notarize this. Tom? I don't have my notary stamp with me.
Okay.
So you can pick it up at my office tomorrow, maybe?
Okay, sure.
I'll give Bill some blank copies if I, so he can give it to you.
I don't need any.
You don't need any more?
I don't need any more.
Okay.
I don't think I want any more.
Okay, okay.
He's out of the subdivision business.
Good night. Good night.
Till the next time.
Yeah. Chris Suwicky?
All right. I want to revisit the change of use of the house to residential to commercial.
Okay.
I revaluated the parking on the whole lot and there was a bunch of reserved parking in back and that, so we extended it out. If you look at the second page. Sending the reserve parking out, just in that area there actually goes far above what we would need for total parking. It's all been cleared and leveled land back there and it's all well in front of the retention wall.
You still have enough green space?
Yes, it's on the first page on the bottom. It's still at 28 percent.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's still well above the 20 percent green space and it's all cleared back there as well. So it's just a basically a change. And I used the card of the house, the 1,680, so that's the total gross square footage.
How much?
1,680.
1,680?
I think that's, it's on the last page on the property card.
Oh, okay.
I doubled that and added that in.
Okay.
What's the address of this property, please?
189 Russell.
Thank you.
Former Sears.
The front, the house.
The house, the house next to it.
Yeah.
So it's going to be paved parking and the drainage is going to go into the?
Well, it's all reserve parking right now. The part that's in?
Well, so it was calculated.
Yeah, it was already calculated as reserve parking. We just, I just extended the reserve parking in the back.
Reserve parking, Jim, you want to explain it?
When a building is put up, it requires two-for-one parking. Obviously, not every project that's put up needs a two-for-one, but they've got to have it on site. And if they don't want to use it, they don't have to. They can leave it as green state, but this needs to be included in the calculation ultimately that if you ever wanted to put it in, you could come back at a meeting like this and say, hey, I want to pave it because I need it for whatever reason. And they can just go ahead and pave it and there's no site plan approval required or anything because it's already, all the numbers were crunched on the original, it's supposed to have been crunched on the original design.
So they've got the capacity, but it's in everyone's benefit to leave a green space?
If they don't need it, correct?
Right, right.
Yeah, so the plan is, it's still, again, we still have the plan.
Right, I mean, it saves them a ton of money. They don't, obviously, if they don't have to do that, it just stays as?
Yeah, the goal is to leave it as green space now.
But then they're not here that the reserve parking space cuts into the green space?
No, the reserve parking does not count as green space.
Does not count as, right.
Right.
It's taken off.
Right.
So functionally, they have much more green space than they're required to have. We just don't, we don't count the reserve parking towards it.
Right. Somebody asked me what the, when tandem bagels we're going to open to get a little itchy and excited.
Yeah, we're hoping end of the year, beginning of the year, January issues.
Well, it's change of use. It was residential.
Residential.
It was residential, so change of use is a trigger.
Talked to the building inspector about it as well.
I am not sure that we can, we can waive if there's under 10 percent expansion. So there's no exterior alterations, plus, yes, and pretty sure it's less than 10 percent of the?
The building, how much did you say? 1,500?
1,680.
1,680 with the second floor?
Yeah.
And you're going to do both floors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 1,680 gross.
And so the Sears is 25, 760?
That's the two times, yeah. It's, well, it's 12, 800 times two.
Yeah, 20, 25, 760, right.
Yeah. Plus 3360.
So 10 percent is 2,500. Okay, 25, 700, 2760, 200 is bussy, but you'd only get 1,500 or 1,600.
1,680.
Whatever, like probably 7 percent, 6 percent, they've had.
Yeah, for total.
Are you going to do any exterior alterations to the house? You're going to leave it just as, it's going to be office space or something?
That's it.
Signs?
Maybe on the front door.
Okay. We'll approve, probably will approve everything but the signs. So once you decide on signage, you'll need to go, whoever it is will need to come back to us.
We don't even have, yeah, it's not major at all. So, yeah, we'll come back to if we put anything on there beyond, I mean, would you sign on the door if we are? We'll have one on the other door, I think, so.
Also, we're going to include this little caveat.
I've got it coming. I got it.
Okay. You are probably going to be exempted from site plan approval, further site plan approval because of alteration less than 10 percent. However, you will still need to go to any other department for appropriate water, sewer, building, whatever else you're going to do. This is not a waiver of the need to go to see anybody else that has jurisdiction.
Who did this calculation?
I took it off the original Berkshire Design Group number, off reference.
I've been trying to reinforce the fact that the future, we'd just like to know who prepared it and what the date is.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, the date is on?
I've only asked for it like 29 times.
Well, he does have it up at the top.
Yeah. Who prepared it?
Understand.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval. For one, this is 193?
189.
189, Russell speaking, okay. For conversion. 189 Russell to puppet space. That's the motion.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You would kindly step up here. Sign one of those to acknowledge you've received it. You're not signing to agree with it, just that you received it. And you take the other.
19?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the building inspector would actually have, I have a form that he's given me to sign off on.
He, Jim will give the building inspector a form from us plus this.
And then I saw the form you gave me to fill out that I can give to him as well.
Okay, yes. I don't think, I don't think he's in tonight.
That's okay. Oh, yeah, I'll drop it on this.
Yeah.
Okay. All good?
All good.
Thank you very much.
Good. Philip Myers?
I'm here to submit an application for special, to get a special permit to operate in the local business zone. I'm purchasing, trying to purchase 37 Lawrence Plain Road.
The current spice company?
Yep, current spice company does.
Nope.
We, I'm, I do want to just confirm.
How many, how many copies do you have here?
I mean, five copies of each packet, I believe is what we need.
That and one more. Oh. Make all the, all the copies, all of them. Okay, do you have the ability to make more copies?
Oh, absolutely. I have it all in digital format.
If you could drop, actually, two more copies?
Two more?
Just in a planning board mailbox.
Sure.
Within the next couple of days. That's all.
Absolutely. I can do that pretty easily. Butters, I got envelopes stamped for all the butters, two each.
Good. Are there two sets in here?
Two sets, yeah, plus an extra set of those.
That's the spice, spice factory building?
It is on the spice company.
Do you have an application form?
There should be on that first packet I handed you.
Oh, there we go.
So what Jim is going to do is calculate the filing fee.
Okay.
He's going to give that back to you.
Okay.
And you are going to, when you bring, you're going to pay the town clerk tomorrow
or in the next couple of days. Sure.
We don't handle money, so that's why you're paying her. And you will bring her a complete set of the plans.
Okay.
In fact, if you can't make a copy in time, you can take one of these.
I can have a full set printed out.
Okay, so actually, there's a little change in procedure.
Sure.
We had a, we had our development committee meeting this afternoon and the fire chief wasn't sure he had seen the plans for the hotel we approved. He said it has site plan approval already. So the new system is that you are going to take two copies of the document set to the town clerk.
Okay.
The town clerk is the wife of the fire chief.
Sure, you have one for the fire chief.
She will make sure that he gets his own copy directly.
Okay.
And when it goes to, when it goes into the public safety slot, I guess it sometimes goes to the police, sometimes goes to the fire, doesn't necessarily always get to the chief.
So we'll give him that.
So two copies to the town clerk and two copies in the planning board box.
Only two for the planning board, okay.
Two more. So you're going to bring a total of four copies.
Okay, yeah, that can be done.
What is the name of your company going to be?
We're still determining the name of the company.
So you just call it Philip Myers?
Yeah, that's fine for now. And just for confirmation, I was curious if we would be doing this as an amendment to the current special permit or if it's a?
Brand new.
It would have to be a current permit.
Your site plan approval is still valid. There's no change of that because there's no, essentially no alteration except for the signage stuff, correct?
Right, we are in a situation where the septic system is not just.
That's irrelevant. That's relevant. We're talking architectural or site modification. That's underground. Whatever you're going to do with that, that's another story.
Okay.
We're just looking at change of use, but it'll be notified. It's a special permit unique to that.
Okay.
The original site plan approval will still be valid because there's no basic change to that, okay?
Yeah, sounds good.
This is at 35 Lawrence Plain.
35?
37.
Is, yeah, and the town and the deed says 37 and the seller has the address as 35. So I tend to put both.
I'd have called former, I'll put 35 Lawrence Plain, former spice company. How's that?
It's confusing to me, too.
And public hearing, December?
Seventeen.
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 And this is going to be in Taekwondo?
Well, we're going to do fitness programs. We have martial arts classes as well as?
So fitness, so it'll be change of use to fitness and martial arts?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to know when I describe it, the public hearing, I want to be relatively accurate.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I have a, in the project review, I have a full description.
You know, John Kenneth Galbert's called, all this is going on.
So you're going to, he's going to give copy to the fire department and police chief? Fire, well, fire department, fire department. He wants two copies?
Mike wants to be sure, the fire chief wants to be sure he gets a copy. So you're still going to put a copy in the public safety?
Okay.
But that can go to, or you can go put it in the police department box?
Yeah, put it in the police.
Okay. But just, we're going to just try this out to see how it works.
Okay.
Okay, so two copies to the town clerk when I go to pay and then two, two more copies?
Two more copies to me. If he's going to get a copy, I'll need two more.
Okay, and that'll go in the planning board mailbox, which is outside the town clerk's office.
Okay.
There's a big nail tower.
Very good.
Great, okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Jeff Squire?
The boy.
From somebody?
Yeah. Berkshire Design Group here about 97 Hadley, which is the Hadley Garage. You're part of the story here on behalf of Mark Kraus, who couldn't be here tonight, but trying to help him navigate the process because I think he's getting conflicting information, different things, and trying to just get him to where he needs to go. And so I figured the best way to do it was sort of introduce you with what our suggestion was to him and just get your feedback before we submit anything formally. I understand that a site plan application will be required for the change in use. Currently, it's still being used partially as an auto repair shop garage, but obviously with other tenants, it's going to be a, you know, multi-tenant building, so they'll need to come to you, you know, for changing use. Providing that those uses are all allowed in the district, the goal is to provide enough parking and improve the site enough so that it becomes more non-conforming. Right now, it's a pre-existing non-conforming site, so to try to make it as conforming as we can and serve all the various uses. And as, you know, obviously, the adjacent restaurant, Esalon Building comes into play only because he happens to be the business owner of that, that business. He doesn't own the building, he doesn't own the site, so he has no control over that building. He just owns the business. So part of his goal in purchasing the adjacent site was to try to, try to provide parking spaces to alleviate the pressures on his business next door. And by doing so, he was trying to attract clients or tenants that, you know, have a minimum parking requirement. So all that said, where?
So who owns the building where Esalon is?
It's a, it's a, it's a third party.
Third party company, okay.
Right, so they don't have any control over the building, over the parking lot, over any of that. And so we're just trying to get them as much as we can, you know, with the adjacent site.
So just by way of background, the select board is actively taking up a proposal to start restricting parking because there has been a complaint from the school department about the inability to?
Sure.
Get a bus in there to service a student that needs to be picked up. So that's, that's been thrown into the mix.
Yep, no, I know there's a lot of background to it and I know, again, Mark's getting conflicting information, so I'm trying to just?
We can't shoot the messenger?
Help navigate the, no, not yet, not yet. And so this is just sort of a sketch of what we had presented to him as a, you know, a potential option. It doesn't do anything with the existing curb cuts into the property, just trying to avoid the whole DOT, mass DOT issue. They've got one, two, three, four garage bays that they need to retain access to. Two of them are for the Subaru. One is for tenant in the rear. One is for deliveries for storage space that they currently use. So we need to keep those, maintain those access points. The hope is to rebuild or restore that existing barn garage in the back for storage space.
That, that may be the question. In other words, that wasn't calculated in when we were presented with the preliminary plan.
Sure.
And it was tight not including that building.
Okay.
So.
Well, so right now, he's contemplating keeping it or restoring it or, you know, rebuilding it to be able to use that as storage space. So again, just trying to create some, you know, some business opportunity out of some of the existing structures, limited access. So what, what's here is, you know, we've got the existing building footprint is 6,700 square feet roughly. Parking area, if you double that, we're at about 13, 5. What's shown here is about 14,400, so it meets the two to one. This is all on existing gravel land or paved area right now. There's an area back here where an old foundation or something used to be. It's raised up, so we're not going to, you know, we wouldn't propose to do anything there. In terms of open space, calculating what's here, we're off by about 1,000 square feet, but that doesn't include a lot of these little, you know, ancillary things along the edges, so it?
Take that shed down, you'll have more than enough green space.
When you mentioned the calculation, did you include the shed?
Yes, yep.
There's 6,700?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, it does not, does not include the shed.
Include the shed, okay.
So we have to include that.
If he's going to retain that, you'll need more parking.
Sure, and there's, there's areas like this that we didn't include in the parking calculation, so, you know, we understand that the two to one is required, so we're trying to get there. And so it was, this is really just to introduce the concept to you, see if it, you know, and then we would submit, you know, a formal site plan application with all the requirements.
I'll give you my two cents from a 50,000 foot view.
Yep.
Basically, your plan looks pretty good. I don't like the shed. If you include, include the shed, you're not going to have enough parking with that little space you put up there because there's not really any good, it's just going to be a driveway. The owner of Esalon was told that if he uses that property, he needs to get the cars off the common. Period. No excuses. And if this plan does not include elimination of parking on a common, I will not approve it.
Okay.
Okay, and he was told?
So he told, I'm going to, I promise. And I don't mean to be, I don't, if I sound a buck, I don't mean to sound a buck, okay? But I want to be, I want to be straight out with this, okay? And he certainly can use some of the parking that he has there. He has to use the parking here for the Esalon parking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Shared parking is legal, right? The site plan approval says that, and shared parking is encouraged, so there's not a problem with any of that. But getting off the common is absolute, period. So there has to be, at a minimum, a signed package and a plan to, you know, redirect.
So, yeah, in terms of what we could convey to him to help the process along, what, I mean, what would be the mechanism to?
You know, he was here and he told us he was going to do something.
He knows about it.
Right, but I mean, how do you?
He's ignored, he's ignored it, which apparently is what I don't know.
I don't know. We're not designers.
Yeah.
We're not, we aren't going to design and tell him how to do it. We're telling him and you, the end result needs to be this. However it's accomplished is up to the designer and the owner of the business, okay? The fact that he says he doesn't own the business, he has no control over the building, that is absolutely agreed. However, if he has control over his business and his parking is his clientele, he has control over the parking more than anybody else. He can direct them.
Understood.
Because if he can't, he's the, he is the most, I mean, if the town gets involved and they force the issue, it may not be pretty.
Sure, I guess, and then just plain, I'm not, I'm not arguing the situation at all. I'm just trying to think, you know, as, what would our recommendation be? In terms of how much control he has over some random person driving down the road and parking on the common, whether they're going to the restaurant or somewhere else?
Somewhere else is irrelevant. The people, the people that are parking on the common adjacent to his business are 99 percent his clientele.
So I think the town will be helping out?
Yes.
By putting up some signs, no parking signs?
So the town, right, because that's town property, obviously, so he can't just do whatever he wants on the town property, understood, so?
But he has been.
There's?
He has been, he's has been.
His customers have that.
And he's been encouraging it because he has not been discouraging it, therefore he's guilty by association with fear.
Last time he was here, he told us he was going to make an effort to stop it. He done nothing.
Yeah.
So that tells us, at least me, how he views this board. You know, I think we're going to be tough on him.
You know, I think he's trying to get out to his customers, at least, that there's no parking on the common. Again, I just, I highly?
I haven't seen nothing on his property to indicate no parking on the common.
Sure.
I mean, granted, he can't put signs on a common, but he can put signs on his property that says, please do not park on the town common, and there is nothing that indicates that.
So he could also go to the meeting, select board meeting tomorrow night where this is on the agenda and?
He could.
Ask for?
No signs.
Ask for signs to be put up, offer to pay for signs to be put up.
Sure.
Yeah, so, you know, I mean, the town is certainly willing to work with the gentleman to make sure we call, come to the same end result.
Sure.
It's not like, you know, you do it all. The selectmen and staff are willing to help the school property.
Sheesh, the signs just to give to you.
And enough sense, we're going to beat that up. But as far as the overall plan you've got there?
Been trying to explain.
The overall?
Give to you.
The overall view looks nice. I still think there's, that shed's going to be a tough one. Okay, yes. What will, and obviously, you'll need to dress up the appearance of the override and stuff like that.
Yes.
Well, how many, the TDR apply here if you wanted to keep the shed and you can just give the town some money?
He can, a TDR supply here, yes.
Approximately how many, how much is it per acre?
Nine thousand, about nine thousand. That was the last comment.
So what, how much additional space we talking that he's going to be shy? You make that calculation.
Not much, probably what he, maybe what?
That's the option, he keeps the shed, in fact.
If we can't get the two to one.
Yeah.
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 Provided, provided there's enough parking to begin with, that's the caveat. We're not going to give TDR if you're short on parking for your need. And, you know, depending what the uses are.
Exactly, that's-
Look, right now, Steve Lewis Subaru is out there, he probably, I think he's using six.
His agreement is for ten spaces, right now, the back is four spaces.
Right.
So there's fourteen, so whatever's left over, conceptually, would be available for.
And I've never seen, have Steve Lewis Subaru actually using it now?
I don't believe so, no.
Right, okay. I guess, I haven't seen anybody, hardly any vehicle back there for Steve Lewis.
At least according to Mark, his contractor's agreement with him is for ten spaces.
Okay.
Yep, there was some question as to some of the permits, and he said, "Well, I have got permission from the planning board, but if you heard us before that we will give permission for site plan, but that's not necessarily mean he has carte blanche to do anything he wants within the building."
Right, understood. And I think that's where some of the confusion came in, so I just sort of, you know, I said, anything that's inside the building, code-related, that's building inspector, you know, you've got to do water, plumbing, sewer, all of that. This is site plan, this is about the use, and so I'm just trying to walk him through the process a little bit, because I think some-
Apparently, there was never an oil-water separator in there.
That's correct.
That has been added.
Plus the eyewash, he wanted to use the bathroom, which is down the step, so if somebody gets something in the eye, you kind of need the eyewash.
They'll get those raw board of health and, you know, we have jurisdiction outside of those walls, anything inside is a hole, totally out of us.
I realize this is just a quick schematic. Is it your expectation that when this, when you move the design forward, there would be some kind of dedicated protective pedestrian path?
So, we talked about that, yeah, I mean, we certainly talked about it, and I was contemplating, showing something on here, but I just needed a little more time to think about it, because the thought process being that if somebody over here is trying to go to Esalon, they're just going to cut through here, and there's really only, you know, a small area that we could really put any dedicated pedestrian aisle, and I don't agree if there was a central corridor we could devise.
Is there a parking? Is there a parking? Sidewalk?
No.
There's no sidewalk here?
This is the one stretch from here to, yeah, to West and East Street? Yeah, it's the one section, there's no sidewalk. Yep, it's on this side of the street only, the north side.
But they're going to put a sidewalk on both sides in the center of town all the way to the malls? So, will Mass Highway, yeah, are they content to stay out of this?
I mean, we're not proposing any change to the curb cuts. The use really largely stays the same, at least, you know, for all intents and purposes, if they continue to use it for a garage.
He may be looking for a letter from Mass Highway because pre-existing non-conforming use usually doesn't apply to Mass Highway.
Right, right. And they typically won't review anything unless you're changing alterations in the state highway layout, which we like to avoid.
So they just may want one curb cut, or so, a letter or some verification that you did approach them.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I'm not sure they would even comment on anything if it didn't trigger review of anything, but we can certainly try to reach out to them.
I thought they had more control.
I mean, our experience is if you don't, if you're not modifying anything within the state right-of-way, then they don't have any-
That doesn't like the state right-of-way.
This is the right-of-way, yeah. So this is all, it's paved right now, these are new, relatively new granite curved islands.
So those were put in by Mass Highway?
Right, this modification, when that widening happened.
Okay, so they acknowledged that there were three large points of entry onto the site?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I mean, because if they put the curb, if they put the little mark, the little islands out there, then that's-
And we certainly, you know, we're not proposing to park anything within the right-of-way, so-
That's certainly within their jurisdiction. It was my understanding that they could not deny a curb cut, but they could alter curb cuts depending on egress.
They won't deny you a curb cut, because that would be a regulatory taking, you know, they don't have to give you two or three. They probably wouldn't allow this.
Under current situation.
Or as a new request, but, okay.
So to your understanding, that if you sent them a letter saying, "We plan to do nothing here," they wouldn't even review it, as opposed to maybe saying, "Well, we'd love to see you reduce the number of curb cuts."
We don't want to get involved in that.
Yeah, that's not our-
We don't cross that line. Would we ask for a letter? I think the fact that they made their improvements on the basis of existing conditions is probably all that, all that we need.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is the MIPA control, unless, what is the-
Projects below the threshold of MIPA.
And it has to have so many cars-
Yeah, way below that threshold.
And that would trigger-
Yeah. So the problem is that there's going to be more traffic in and out of the site when this is used as a parking lot for a successful restaurant than when it was used as auto repair. And whatever else happens to go in there, the other couple of bays. But it's not going to be horrendous traffic either, I can imagine.
That kind of gets into a tricky area, because if somebody said, "Well, I'm going to have an auto parts store there like was previously there and a meat market before that," you didn't need the parking, but now they convert it to a restaurant, and that's the problem.
Well, and if they need the parking requirements for the site, the chances of the thing being filled up, for Esalon to park cars there, I mean, how many cars do you park on a common at a time? Half a dozen, ten?
Well, the workers can park there too.
Yeah. Well, yeah. So, you know, he doesn't, I don't think he needs thirty parking spaces for Esalon. My guess is he needs somewhere between six and a dozen, okay? I don't think I've ever seen more than, really, ten cars parked on a common, but I mean, I don't see it all the time.
Or on the street, so it's not just on the common, it's on the street.
About noon on Sunday. Is there a lot of cars on the street? Yeah, I haven't counted though, but that's one of their, Sunday brunch is one of their biggest things. But on Sunday, more than likely, little businesses may not be in session either, depending what's there, so-
And we've been thinking around twenty spaces, twenty, twenty-five spaces left over for Esalon specifically, so we've got the capacity.
So, you know, a lot of the parking, like, you know, to my point, if you need TDR, well, to grant TDR as not carte blanche, we better know what the tenants are, what's the traffic going to be, and he's, from what you're saying, it sounds like he's taking that into common when he's designing for his tenants. So, you know, we don't want to jump too far ahead, but, you know, you kind of got our opinion, which I, did you get what you were coming for?
I think so, yes, yeah. I think I just, it was more getting your responses to this and knowing what we need to do to move forward, but I'm just trying to help him.
One thing, he was talking about coffee roasting plant, or whatever you call it there, and Jim, there was a question that you were raising regarding the odor and is it-
The biggest thing about the coffee roasting is, what is the odor? I know that, by Keats Lumber, rail roasts their coffee there. And if you drive by sometimes, you can smell the coffee roasting. Okay, but first of all, it isn't an industrial zone, it's a committed use, that's number one. Coffee roasting is manufacturing. Yeah, we probably could call it business, because it extends to that business here, but over there, there are no residences nearby.
Sure.
Here, you're, you've got a bunch of them. I don't know if he's been roasting any coffee there, I haven't smelled it, but a few times I've driven by, nobody's complained. But if he does decide to roast, and he's not doing it now, or if he's roasting now and there's no odor, then whatever he's doing, he's doing properly.
Okay.
That's the biggest concern, if you're going to roast coffee, sometimes there's a, you know, once in a while, roasting coffee is a nice odor, but smell it all the time is a different story.
Yep. I can certainly try to get some clarification, yeah. Okay. So we'll plan to submit a site plan application?
Thanks for giving us a preliminary look.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're encouraging the owner to go to the state? Select board meeting tomorrow?
Is it located?
No.
No.
I'm advising him that there is one.
They're related to this.
We're at least two weeks away from filing a plan at this point, so-
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Power?
I have plans for you to review inside.
Yes, bring them on up.
This is for a town place in two thirty, two thirty-seven, across the street.
That's the, by all these, right? No, this is, you're the-
Currently the roadway.
Currently the roadway, got to carry down if what's going on.
So these were prepared by Berkshire Design?
This is just the one to keep one on site. One for the flag, one for the thing. This is something the chairman needs to sign, the front copy, correct?
Correct. When does the action begin?
Most likely next November. We were going to start this November, but we decided to go one more season and then start it. We just finished the other hotels, we're going to just help some stuff.
One stays on the building site. So who generated this? Berkshire Design?
Correct.
Can you ask them to send me an electronic copy?
Will do. I believe I have to also give copy to the planning board too. I mean, the planning board, the building inspector.
So, one of these goes to the building inspector, and the other one will stay on-site in your construction trailer for use as needed by whoever's going to be looking, keep the building inspector, somebody wanted to see one.
Okay.
Okay. And they'll get electronic copy where else?
All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Take care.
Mr. Iser?
It's not too late.
Well, if you want it to be, we can go home.
No, I don't want it to be, because I've got to get this done. And our Mountain Road, it's Barstow.
We have a letter from, this is what, come out of APR?
Sixty-one, maybe?
Sorry, out of sixty-one, sixty-one A?
I'm assuming so.
We have the letter from, so that's the wrong one. Here it is. We have a letter from Longview Farm requesting, they want to take a land out of sixty-one A, which is this right here, and requesting the planning board review this as soon as feasibly, as soon as feasibly possible, and alert us to any issues and next steps.
Okay, so I'll leave the, leave this for now, I have a beautiful colored picture to help you understand what's happening here.
So if you take it out of sixty-one A, how many years back, one go, that we calculated the tax going, I think it's five years?
I don't know.
I think it's five, I think it's five years.
Okay, so, what we're doing is creating one new lot, although on the plan, you see Lot One and Lot Two. What is, shown as Lot One is basically an existing lot where Jimmy Barstow's house is, number forty-one Mountain Road. So that, his existing lot is this yellow. The orange lot-
Mountain Road, this is forty-seven goes around like this?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's on the intersection road over here?
Yeah. The orange lot is what we're creating. There was not enough frontage to create this lot. So what we're doing is taking thirteen point six-five feet from Jimmy Barstow's lot, shown as parcel B, to add it to the frontage here to give us the one-seventy-five we need. Then on the other side, I have a pink triangle that is being given back, so Barstow's Longview is transferring that to Jimmy to basically make him whole again. He doesn't need it, he doesn't, he's more than adequate with frontage and area, but just to make it equitable, if you will, they're trading triangle for triangle. So, again, we're having a new Lot One and a new Lot Two, but really, Lot One is existing with a couple of modifications. And if that's not confusing enough-
This is the land coming out of sixty-one A and this little piece over here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
We don't, we don't get any more involved in sixty-one A than that, that building. Correct. I think you're supposed to get a notification of it being removed from sixty-one A. That would be this. That notification going to sixty-one A. I would think that that would be adequate notification. It really got you all to the board of select-
Right, I think, I don't know if he's aware, I mean, I've never, I don't think I've ever dealt with one where we've been before you, where you've questioned the sixty-one A, so I don't, I've never been through the process.
Yeah, it comes to us, but we don't have to have a hearing on it. Right. We don't even have to have necessarily an agenda item on it, although I would be happier having an agenda item.
Jim, you want to add me on sixty-one?
So sixty-one A is a state program that allows you to have your farmland, as long as it is at least five acres in size, taxed at a reduced agricultural value without requiring you to actually sell or divest yourself of the development potential. So it allows a farmer who does not want to just sell development rights to the APR program to take a, to apply for a reduced tax. The trade-off is that if you put it into sixty-one A, there's also chapter sixty-one and sixty-one B, open space and forest management, as well as agricultural. The taxes are reduced, but when you, if you choose to take it out, you have to repay a period of time, and I think it's longer than five years, it might be seven years. You have to repay the difference between the ag value and the market value for the past seven years. And in addition, when you put it into sixty-one A, you are giving the town, and by extension, a land fund, a right of first refusal to buy the property, which is how we got the property, the fire station is going up off of River Drive. But let's say that they're being offered ten dollars for the land, and the town wanted it, it came up with the ten dollars, they could buy the land out from underneath, people that want to buy it right here.
Most sixty-one A property in town, the town probably wouldn't want. It's not all, very minor part of it is developed.
So, in this case, the fact that the town, that they're selling off a building lot is something the town would probably not have any interest in. But the town still has a hundred and eighty days to decide whether it wants it or not. So there is a waiver request presumably pending before the select board to waive the right of first refusal and to waive the hundred and eighty-day waiting period.
And you're, and the heavy box, is that's part of zoning, that to have a building lot?
One-fifty by one-fifty, with one point touching the road.
Okay, so you've got, yes, so you don't get some weird shaped long-
That's why it was initiated.
Joe Z, Joe can play a hawkeye cannon for the box, he put his head on a piece of paper and-
But it's not without controversy in certain towns. Southampton, I believe, is one recently where a, somebody's going to take out a sixty-one A, and it wasn't a subdivision, but it had to do with some business, and they didn't want that business to expand the neighbors, so the neighbors forced the issue upon the selectmen to buy that land, so-
Sixty-one A is farmland, sixty-one B is woodlot preserve. So you have a similar clause, for lack of a better term, if you have woodland, it falls into another protection of lower taxes. With the same situation, right of refusal, lower valuation, lower taxes, stuff like that.
But both of these came almost together, it was a timely fashion, because there were many farmers that just couldn't afford, let's use Route Nine as an example, if you were farming Route Nine, you couldn't afford the taxes by, you know, growing. you couldn't afford the taxes by, you know, growing hay or corn. So the farmers are almost forced to sell. So that option came along when the APR came along as well, so, uh, it did give farmland some break in, as well as woodlots. Yeah, I'll make a motion to sign the APR, to sign the A and R.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
We don't sign the small ones.
No, no, just the big ones. We just wanted you to be able to see what was going on.
Thank you. And if by signing it, we are functionally going along with the removal of the property.
By Saturday, too, the assessing office doesn't necessarily know who signed it.
Yes, they do. They got a copy. They get a copy. We can, we can two copies of these papers, one goes in our file, one goes directly through the assessment.
Day after tomorrow, this building lot will be on the tax rolls.
You laugh, but that's how they do it in Northampton.
Well. I don't laugh, because I know it, it happens quickly.
So one thing that you'll probably see before long, Mark, is that someone will come in like this with a plan and then, uh, two months later, Randy will be back with a revised plan. Uh, because, well, that really, they didn't like how the lot lines actually laid out. And, um, or they'll get, they'll be very prompt about getting it taken care of, getting it signed, but then the deal may hang for six months before anything actually happens. And I found out in a similar situation in Northampton that, uh, when, soon as the signed plan comes from the planning board to the GIS department, they change the tax backs on the basis of the plan, but that would be buried to whether there's an underlying D.
Yeah, Amherst does the same thing. There's stuff on their GIS that, I mean, I, I know I did a plan, but nothing ever got transferred. So it's very, very confusing.
You got your.
The form A's.
Okay.
You got your two?
You got it.
You're good? Alright, great. Thanks for the options.
That's it. Thank you.
Forty-one Mountain Road?
Yes.
Where's the next?
Yeah.
This sign, so, um, actually.
Do you want an extra copy? Do you have no copies there?
You don't need to get any.
Yeah, that one got. Do you want to sign this one? But that was, what was on the envelope, the last?
We got more than enough.
So we did talk with Tom about further requirements for Megan's way.
Okay, yep.
Uh, affordable housing trust. So I contacted attorney Reedy and asked him what he is holding for us. The number I highlighted, three hundred and fifty thousand, right, is the total amount we will realize in the affordability set aside from the development of East Street Commons.
Right.
Uh, he presently has two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars because not all of the lots have been conveyed. I also consulted the treasurer. We have two hundred and twenty thousand in CPA funds, uh, for community housing. And community, the community housing set aside, and community housing is defined as low and moderate income housing for individuals and families, including low or moderate income senior housing. And then there's a definition of low income housing, annual income less than eighty percent of the median, and moderate income housing, annual income less than one hundred percent of the median. So that two hundred and twenty thousand plus twenty-five thousand that was voted, yeah, to go into it at annual town meeting, which is not included in the two hundred and twenty thousand. So we have a grand total, we're looking at a grand total of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in, uh, affordable housing money. And we don't have anything, any mechanism in place to deal with it.
Right.
So, that's why I wanted to, uh, and maybe not get very far with it tonight, but I wanted to, uh, reopen the discussion of setting up an affordable housing trust fund, municipal affordable housing trust fund. Uh, I think we are at the point that, uh, when we first adopted, or we first considered the bylaw at the time we adopted inclusionary zoning, we didn't have a penny in the pot. And, uh, uh, we, the subdivisions that we have approved, the Quinlan subdivision was beneath the inclusionary zoning threshold. The Perkium subdivision went in before the affordable housing, uh, inclusionary zoning adoption.
Right.
So the only subdivision we have that is affected by the inclusionary zoning is the one that Peter Jelinek did off of Shattuck Road, that just has a one unit uh, contribution. But obviously, the contribution from Barry Roberts is, is big and added to what we already have. Uh, I think it's time we figured out how to.
Like I say, the contribution of the people that bought the units over there is pretty.
Well, whatever.
Well, it's, it's, it's a wealth transfer.
That's right. We're about that.
Anyway, the, the only problem, I mean, one that they issued with a housing trust fund is that there are some complicated requirements by the state of annual filings and everything else for that.
If it dips into the Community Preservation Act money?
No.
I don't think we have the same filing, reporting requirements. I printed it out for what it's worth.
What are the requirements?
There's a lot. Annual reporting, annual.
That's very easy. You, you, this is a statement of what the trust assets are as of this date. No money was spent, this is the amount reserved, end of discussion. Very simple.
I, I don't believe it's that simple.
How, how would a trust fund work? I'm, I'm trying to understand what, what.
You're gonna have a committee.
I mean, the money, so you're gonna put this money into a trust fund?
Into a fund.
And then what is going to happen with said money?
In other words, uh, I'll just use the town, it's easiest that way. The town wanted to put up some affordable housing units and, like they did for the stuff behind Golden Court. You could use that money to put up those units. Let's say there's five hundred thousand in the trust fund, you could withdraw all of it and put it towards that.
The terms of the trust will tell you what you can do with the money in the trust.
But there, is it only the town can use it, or can?
No, 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 no. It can be doled out to individuals, to corporations, um, it can be utilized for anybody. There, there's, there's guidelines in the state affordable trust fund guideline.
That was a good, good question, because let's say a sub-apartment is coming off their, their forty B housing. In other words, they have a certain number of years, and they can go at the market rate. If all of a sudden, uh, Amherst did that, it's, you can contribute a certain amount from the trust fund to that individual to say, if you sign for another ten years, we'll give you some money. So.
So you don't.
And that's because we are well above the ten percent threshold. And that ten percent threshold is kind of a, a guideline. Most towns around here don't even come close to ten percent. Sunderland's got one percent, but they're putting up some right now.
You don't have to do anything with the money. They can just sit there for ten years, or twenty years. You don't.
Yeah, you could, you could build it up. So among other things, you can, uh, you can, uh, use the stream of income from CPA, for example, uh, for, uh, funding debt service. So in the example Jim gave of putting up, actually constructing affordable housing units, you could apply for grants, take out a mortgage, and, uh, use the stream of income to pay the, the debt service on that. Another item that we've seen is that you could, um, you could apply it towards, uh, some infrastructure needs to direct affordable housing where you want it to be, rather than where the forty B developer wants it to go. Uh, the example we were talking about a couple of years ago, it never went anywhere, but, um, we could, for example, use this money, uh, to abate land at asbestos at North Happy Hall and pay for the installation of an elevator, and then lease the property to a developer who would put in senior housing, affordable senior housing. Not having to pay from dollar one, the developer could more likely keep it affordable if we did some of the base work.
Do you have to be extremely careful due to the fact that you've got CPA funds mixed in with?
Yeah, there's more, there's separate reporting of the CPA funds.
There, there's certainly strictens on CPA and vice versa on the affordable housing trust funds. You can mix and match them, but there are some different guidelines between them that you're gonna be very careful of.
Have to be careful how you spend your money.
Yeah, complicated. We, we've gone to several meetings and you have to, actually Pioneer Valley is thinking about being a conduit, but they charge a lot. So, uh, a lot of people are making. Well, yeah, what we found was that the, uh, part of the genesis for this, and I'll liken it to TDR. When we first adopted TDR, we had a provision, we, we still have a provision in there that you, as the developer, could go out and find me as the farmer and strike whatever deal you need to strike with me. And as long as you're protecting my acreage, uh, protecting adequate acreage, there's no limit. The state has a limit on how much it will pay towards, uh, development rights. But we thought this might be a, TDR might be a secondary market that would have no limits. We have found, we have not had one occasion when the developer has actually negotiated their own conservation restriction. They have uniformly put their money into a fund from which we draw the town's matching funds for APR. So when we set up the inclusionary zoning, which is, uh, a fancy way to say affordability zoning, when we set it up inclusionary zoning, we did intend for there to be a trust fund. But the, there are reasons why it didn't go forward at that time. But we also didn't push it at the time because there was no money on the table.
The biggest concern that the town finance committee has on the affordable trust fund is that there is a clause in there where the trust fund committee can appropriate funding separate from town meeting. And they can extend the town's liabilities tremendously. So that, let's say there's a five hundred thousand dollars in a trust fund, they can go out and get.
Leverage the money.
They can leverage the money, exactly, to get a four million dollar project going. Now the town is on the.
But it wouldn't have the town's bond with it.
Okay, so I, the, the thing is, that was a statement made at the night of town meeting by the finance committee at the time.
That's not true.
And that was the first time that they had mentioned it to anyone.
Yeah.
Uh, town council was not prepared to address it. We certainly weren't prepared to address it, so we just said, let's pass over that article. Yeah, as, as I've read that, the statute does talk about the municipal housing trust fund has the authority to, to borrow. But, um, I don't think anybo, anybody has the ability to borrow without town meeting oversight.
Okay, I asked Joel Bar that question. He says, it depends how you set up the trust fund. You can set up the trust fund committee that they can borrow separate from town meeting. Or you can set up the trust fund with wording that no borrowing can be done by the trust fund committee without appropriate town meeting approval. But it gets very complicated, and we just never pursued that to go after the right wording, because there's so much, there's a lot of complexity of setting up the trust fund and the committee. Who would be on it? You get a revol, you know, and a lot of other things. And, you know. The ideal, the ideal thing is to see how, I hate to use the word, but how simply can we set up this trust fund and the committee? So that, I'll just think outside the box. The planning board, I don't think can be done. The planning board is the trust fund committee. And we're going to, if it's pop, I don't know that that's legal, so I'm just using that as an example. So the planning board is going to know a lot about the money, because they're going to vote approve the money going in and approve the money going out. But the problem with that is they are also the ones that would go out and it becomes a very considerable burden on the planning board or any committee to go out and, you know, look for, if they wanted to, look for someone to fund to. Or to Mike's point, if you let it sit there for a long time and just accumulate, accumulate.
But if, if, if the trust fund borrowed on its own, I don't think it would be backed by the full faith and credit of the town of Haverly. It'll be more of a revenue bond, I think. And it would be basically tied to the project.
Joel has recommended, instead of setting up a trust fund, set up, he's, I think he called it an, like an enterprise stabilization fund. Where you put money into it, it doesn't need all the reporting requirements, and town meeting could appropriate money out of it, just like they do with one of the funds now, the stabilization. I think he, he called it stabilization fund, is what he called for. Two-thirds town meeting go, pull money out and put it towards a worthwhile project. And he said that would be a much simpler way to do that. He said you could still gain the interest on the money. So there's, there's things to be explored here.
Yeah, what are the benefits to having a trust then?
You don't need to do all the record, you don't do all the reporting for the state.
By doing the, the stabilization fund or whatever, enterprise fund.
But that.
Is there some benefit to having a trust that you're not gonna have there, though?
Uh, well, sure, you'd be out from under the reporting requirements, but on the other hand, you also wouldn't have access to the CPA money.
Yeah.
I don't think.
No.
Okay.
Whately's got one, Levitt's got one. We should just reach out to Whately and just see how those poor farmers are fair dealing.
So, uh, it does have to be created, the board of trustees has to be appointed by the select board. And one of their member, at least one of their members has to be on it.
Okay.
But it, they could appoint, it has to be, uh, no less than five, so they could appoint a six-member board, which is us and one of them.
Okay.
If it came to that.
I'm not opposed to, to the trust fund by any stretch. I mean, I was one of the ones that voted that we wanted to keep it. But I also wanna make it so it's not a burden to whatever, however it's gonna be done, because some, like I said, the reporting requirements.
Well, it says the books and records shall be audited annually by an independent auditor in accordance with accepted accounting practices.
Okay.
So the town has an annual audit anyway.
That would be a simple thing to audit.
Yeah.
We've got this much money in, nothing went out.
Yeah. Where, where it gets more complex is you also have to separately report how you use CPA money to the CPA, whoever the powers that be are on that. But the, you know, how, where we go from this is not as important, I think, as the fact that we time to do something, because we've got five hundred and seventy-five thousand reasons to do something.
Why don't we reach out to, I can give somebody Whately a call signal.
Why don't you, Randy?
How difficult is reporting under this?
Yeah.
How nervous is it?
If you would volunteer, contact Whately and see what they're doing, how they do it. it, and, you know, find out how much money they have in their fund.
Let's hypothetically assume that another fifty-five and older housing proposal comes through us. Would we demand affordable housing units as opposed to taking money in lieu of that?
Right now, there's nothing in the, in the housing that allows us to take a fund. We removed that from the affordable housing bylaw, from the senior housing bylaw. They have to put the housing in. Again, if we, if we, if we create this fund, then we could put the wording back in to both of them.
North Hadley Hall would be potential? It is a potential already because... It's a zone property. Existing structures wherever located.
Were we talking about renting versus owning?
Well, this is, Mike, Mike's got a good point.
Well, you know, the whole, people need affordable housing because they can't afford to go out and get a mortgage.
The affordable housing fund doesn't have to be for ownership.
Exactly, but that's my point.
It can be, it can be rented, it can be, the money that the fund has could go towards a developer or the town to either own or rent. That, that doesn't matter.
Because the price that you can resell one of these units at is not the market price. It's whatever a certain formula tells you it has to be. And so theoretically, you could pay a hundred thousand dollars for a house, and if the general income level in the state or the area we're talking about went down, you might only be able to sell it for ninety thousand because somebody could only afford to pay ninety thousand for it. So, this is the conundrum.
Chance of that going down.
You get my point?
Yes.
If it's worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the market, you own it, might only go yet a hundred and fifty. So, what's the purpose of having an ownership or an equity interest in a piece of real estate if you can't benefit from it? That's why I don't think owning these things is wise at all.
And there's always the question of where. Now, in our current senior housing overlay, we picked it in part because it does have proximity to, to a bus, quote-unquote downtown services. That's the problem you get with the inclusionary zoning on subdivision. Someone puts a subdivision in on the Sunderland line, which is five, it's actually closer to the Sunderland bus routes than it is Route nine bus routes. You know, is that, are you, what are you achieving there? Whereas if you can get a contribution and put it towards something, something where you want, and again, this ties in with our bond rating. If we had, with a sizable down payment and if we borrowed only enough to be serviced by the annual income, rents and the annual CPA income, you could probably take out a pretty healthy loan at AAA bond rating rates. Randy is well aware of the fact that the CPA pot is not growing substantially bigger, but more towns are being involved. Oh, guess what? It is going to get bigger because filing fees are going up. They're doubling.
Doubling?
The CPA surcharge is doubling.
Really?
That's the way they fund. So, mortgage discharge is fifty dollars plus twenty-five dollars CPA discharge, surcharge today.
Okay.
On January one, it's going to be a hundred and twenty-five dollars with, yeah, a hundred and twenty, it's gonna be up to a hundred and twenty-five, so I guess it'll be a...
Seventy-five and then fifty? Double the CPA to fifty and open the regular to seventy-five?
Yeah, so the, the increase is going to be directed to, that, that has gone through really under the radar. I just learned about it. So, if you have any plans you've been meaning to file?
To get them done. Has there any, been any discussion, I'm sure somebody has, as to whether it makes more sense to make, mandate the inclusionary housing in a subdivision, or to take it, as you said, and put it where you want it in that, let's say, Burcume's subdivision? He's got twenty-eight lots between the two subdivisions out there. And what, what, what would we have to do today?
The planning board has the option to require it within the subdivision.
Okay.
It is not the developer's option, it's the planning board option.
But my point being, you've got twenty-eight lots there, and let's say he's gotta put four inclusionaries. So, he's got twenty-four, six to nine hundred thousand dollar houses and interspersed four two hundred thousand dollar houses.
Which he has to rent.
No, he could sell them.
Whatever, but whatever, whatever the situation is.
I know where we still...
So, does it make more sense to have those four houses in amongst all that other stuff and have four elephants in the room, so to speak? Or to take that money and add it to this fund, and then when we get enough to build something that makes sense? Because now you've got like people in the same place, and not to say that somebody that can't afford his six hundred or nine hundred thousand dollars is a bad person, but... Get myself in trouble.
There's no easy answer to that. The idea of inclusionary zoning is to intersperse them in the general population period. Okay? Irrelevant of anything else. That's the general theory. On the flip side, on the flip side of that, forget the interspersing, if you've got a fund, do you build it up? To your point, forgetting the thing about the, the general interspersion. That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you.
Arguments both ways. Our, our current inclusionary zoning bylaw, well, as originally adopted, it had three options. Build your units in your development, build your units elsewhere in town, or contribute to the trust fund. But then we never set up the trust fund, so effectively, that option has been annulled and it's, it's removed from the latest version.
I think it should be a goal of this board to bring a trust fund before town meeting.
I think, I think we need to do research on that.
Yeah.
I agree.
Well, it's not, it's not dilly-dally. I mean, I don't have much time left.
So, there, I, I was digging through my emails, and I found an email that Jim had sent to Larry Smith with everything that we had put together. And Larry replied with some other information, so I will put those into a, a new email.
Everybody's gonna have an opinion. We had a presentation over an hour, it was two years ago, three years ago, and somebody from the eastern part of the state came, and the presentation was more appropriate for, say, a Newton or Wellesley than for a Hadley or a Schutzbury or a Levitt. It was just, you know, fireworks were going off, and we're like, slow down, this is not what we need.
There's gonna be, to Mike's point, there are towns around us that have this fund that are working with it. And, you know, to Joel Baranek's point, questions I've asked him, he's, you can set up the trust fund committee and limit their, within reason, you can limit their freedom. Town meeting can do that. He says the state will tell you how, how much you can limit it, but he says, you know, he says you may be able to accomplish what you want. And really, the goal we want is to have the fund, require town meeting to spend anything, and just manage the fund accordingly. And that's, you know, a very simple statement, you know, that's probably possible, and meet the, obviously meet reporting guidelines for both CPA and this thing.
But clearly, if you wanted to add to the stock of housing, you're in the light of interest rates, now's the time to borrow.
So, what, the thing we found that was interesting is, I went to, with another presentation through Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and they had someone from Boston come out and, in, in their eyes, I forget which agency it was, but in their eyes, a unit is a unit. So, when you talk about including something in a subdivision that looks like what's there, you'd be thinking, well, maybe you're putting four-bedroom homes in, you have to put a four-bedroom home. But a unit's a unit, so you can, you can have an affordable studio apartment, and that weighs just as much as an affordable four-bedroom house. So, the devil is in the detail because as Amherst is doing this single occupancy units, if it's on Autumn View Drive beside, that's your street? If it's there, I think the neighbors would kind of coalesce and say, not my back area. That's, that's, that's a problem as well.
Right, yeah, definitely.
But it could be a resolution to a problem like North Hadley Hall.
Well, if it's a new subdivision, and you grant it, putting it into an existing property, well, most people are going to look kind of very uppity by saying, you can't put this affordable unit in my, I can't imagine, they're gonna get a lot of support at a town meeting. Okay? In other words, you've got a nine hundred thousand dollar home, and the town owns a lot next to you, just assumed this, and they wanna put in a two hundred thousand dollar home. So, the people around the nine hundred thousand dollar homes are gonna say, I don't want that two hundred thousand dollar home next to me. Do you really believe they're gonna get a lot of support fighting that home in town meeting? I doubt it.
Depends how many cousins they have.
I don't care how many cousins they got. I don't think they're gonna...
How do we handle, how do we handle a subdivision that somebody lays out a subdivision and they sell off the lots?
They're gonna sell two, they've got a, there's appropriate number, have to be affordable.
But they're building a variety of styles of housing, and we say they're supposed to look like the neighboring houses.
That's gonna be the developer's problem to institute that.
Okay, yeah, you're gonna have to...
They're gonna, they're gonna put the appropriate deed restrictions on those properties.
Yeah, our, our protection is that in the, when we adopted, what, subdivision we approved after the inclusionary zoning went through, we put deed restrictions on two lots, or said we would not release the last two deed description, deed restrictions, or we'd not...
Lots.
We would not, we would keep two lots...
In covenant.
In covenant. We would release the next last lot only upon satisfactory compliance with inclusionary, and the last lot upon acceptance of the row.
And he said he would take one of his apartments and make them affordable, someplace in town. That's fine, they don't care where it is.
Yeah.
Well, I'll call Whately up and see if I get some information.
Yeah.
You know, my mother was a Farrak, so I gotta pull it quick.
So, I think what I'm going to do is just leave that, that line on the agenda going forward. And maybe we can loop in PVPC.
Yeah, can't we have to like, next meeting, we can probably, you know, get something and get to see what he has.
And as I was looking back, we did get a lot of stuff from Larry because when we were re, sort of polishing the inclusionary zoning, we did take out some language, but we're definitely talking about whether to do this. But as I said, the stakes are rising, so... I have nothing else.
I have nothing else.
Motion's adjourned.
Second?
Oh, favor. Meeting is adjourned, please, thank you. Everybody have a good Thanksgiving.